Okay, we are recording.
All right, then, seeing as we have a quorum, I will call in to order the November 15th, 2022 session of the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Welcome to everyone, special welcome to all of you joining us who are SBC members and have served so diligently on the Memorial School Project. We're grateful to have you here tonight, and welcome also to our presenters, from Galen Associates. Thank you all for being here. We will begin with public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, as I have put it, put in the comment area in the chat, excuse me, please put your name and address in the chat. I'm not seeing any in the chat. Abby, do you see one that I'm not seeing?
Oh, here we go. I see a hand raised. I don't know if it's, oh, now it's there. It's the same person.
Okay, Anne Harrison. So, so, sorry, Anne, I've already called on you, and I see Kristin, if you're, if you want to put your name and address in the chat for us to keep accurate records, that would be a big help. Anne, go ahead.
The doors are locked. How do you get into the meeting?
We are virtual tonight. This is not to do my official thing. We generally don't do back and forth with our, with our public comment. However, that is a technical question, a practical issue, and we are virtual tonight. So you get in from whatever door you wish to sit inside that building of.
Okay, sorry, missed that.
No problem, sorry, Anne.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so I see someone has, okay, Kristin McLaughlin, and can you put your address in the chat just for the minutes, and then we can start? Thank you. Excellent. Thank you for doing that, Anne, also. Okay, Kristin.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Okay, I can't turn my video on, but I'm hoping you can hear me at least.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I am, I'm only commenting because no one else is, and I'm disappointed, to say the least, that no, but I received an email forward earlier yesterday afternoon, which would have been Monday afternoon, that was between a parent, who I don't know, and Pam, and the school committee, and then Pam, and then the school committee, and then back and forth between Pam, the entire school committee, and then there was back and forth between the parent and John Willis of the elementary school. The person that forwarded it to me was not the person that wrote the letter. So it's irrelevant who forwarded me the email, because I know it wasn't her. But the email was concerning to me, because it's irrelevant who the email is about or what it was, but the content of the email was concerning. And what I learned through the email is that the school council vote and election that was recently held this past month was done by the PTO, and the PTO was in charge of hosting the vote for school council, and there were two open seats. The concern is surrounding the SurveyMonkey survey that went out, because that was just a public, open link. And my understanding, based on the emails and based on trying it myself, is that anybody in the world could have voted for who was elected to school council at Manchester Memorial this year. There was no restrictions that you had to be a parent or a guardian of a student attending Manchester Memorial. The person I spoke with confirmed that her parents voted for a person on school council, and the person also confirmed that their friends that don't even live in Massachusetts and obviously have no relation to a child in Manchester Memorial voted for our school council elections. That's concerning to me. And if it's not concerning to everybody, then I'm disappointed in our school committee. And I know, based on what I saw in the email chains, it's not up to school committee. I think Pam was saying she wants to meet the person that wrote the email, but that's wholly irrelevant. What's relevant is the fact that SurveyMonkey is a faulty system for election process at our school. So I would hope that the school committee could get involved and address that issue, please. I'm wondering why there were no provisions to protect the integrity of the election process for school council members. And if, if it's so simple that nobody cares, then put all of the candidates on school council. But I understand there were only two slots. There were three candidates.
Kristin, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, because we are past the time limit for public comment, so please.
Okay.
I want you to be able to close your thought.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. I just, I would, I would hope the school committee could address that email chain that you guys were all forwarded. The particular person, to me, didn't matter who sent it, or why, you know, who did it. It was just concerning that the SurveyMonkey.
Okay, your sound has cut out, but I think we got the end of it. So thank you for what it's worth. We did not mute you. You may have muted yourself on accident, but thank you for your comment. Do we have, I don't see anyone else in the public comment chat at this time? Do we have anyone calling in by telephone that would like to make public comment? If so, please unmute yourself, say your name and address. Okay, hearing none, we will close the public comment section of the meeting. And Maria, could you please close the chat feature? If you, oh, you may have already did. You're fast. Whether it's you, come on over there. Fast.
That's my monitor.
Excellent, thank you. We do not have a student report tonight. Diego is off, so we will move straight to the chairman's report, which I will keep short and sweet. I responded since we last met to, to emails from two different community members on behalf of the committee, who all received those emails as well. And that's all I have to report tonight. So I've invited Erica to read our next bullet point on the school committee operating protocols. Tonight, we begin section two, which is demonstrate professional and collegial relations with each other. And so she will read the first bullet point for us.
All right, that took me a second to unmute. Maintain trust and mutual respect between and among committee members, the superintendent, and the administration by treating everyone with dignity, respect, even in times of disagreement.
Thank you very much. And for those visiting, we, we take the opportunity each meeting just to read one of our bullet points on our operating protocols as a reminder to us all. That's it for my chairman's report tonight. Next, we have the consent agenda. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes warrants, the warrants for vouchers 1020 and voucher 1021, and also the minutes for 1018 and 1111, which were sent out to us. Is there a motion?
Make that motion, Kate.
Is there a second?
Jake.
Jake, for the second? Any discussion? Did everyone have a chance to, to go through everything? Okay, any other discussion about this? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote by roll call. Let me see, I just want to make sure I get everyone. No Chris here.
Mr., can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Abby. Do you have anything to share?
Well, just that we had a question or two, and I'm wondering if now or later would be a good time just to kind of provide some information. Every now and then we get questions, and I think when it's a topic that we can, might be a common question for other people, we'd just like to go through them real quickly. So would it be okay if I just provide some of that information?
Of course.
One of the questions was, it was kind of a second time someone had asked, so I definitely think it would be helpful. Just relates to the charge we have for Green Street Power Partners. It's solar power generation. Just to make sure everyone understands what that is, we, they act as a power company for solar power generation on our rooftop at the middle school, high school. The arrangement was set up through a bulk procurement led by Power Options, our energy consultant. And what happens is because we are tax exempt, we're not able to monetize state recs or incentives for solar generation and green energy, nor are we able to, well, we are able to get those. We're not able to monetize the tax credits. So we, by working with private entities that are pre-procured, they can generate those and pass on the savings to us. So they do that by selling us energy. We also can, that those credits help us to get a lower rate than we would have otherwise available in the marketplace. We brought this to school committee back when we installed the solar panels as a 20-year fixed price agreement, representing about 25% of the energy generation at the middle school, high school. So in a sense, it creates a fixed price hedge, which is basically, you know, layman's terms means not having to worry about price volatility for that portion. So unlike speculation where you're betting on what happens, this just allows us to have a fixed price, which for budgeting in the public sector, generally people tend to prefer predictability. So that's how that works and why we're paying them for solar power generation. We also do not have to outlay any costs for the construction. That is assumed by them, but passed back to us, so that is added to the cost of the energy, and we pay that over 20-year term. So that's how that works, and I'm happy to maybe take questions as I go through all the items. We had another question about the late fee. It's not very large that we pay for centers for Medicare and Medicaid. And this has been in my notes for some time now, but we do not incur any late fees for late enrollment for people who enroll in Medicare on a go-forward basis. When people in age into Medicare, they have to enroll at that time. Late enrollees pay a penalty, and the reason is Medicare doesn't want people to join in when they have a claim suddenly, just like all insurance. And because we exercised provision and matched general law back in, I think it was 2011, where all retirees who are eligible must go onto Medicare as their primary insurance. At first, it saves the district a large sum of money every year, where it's about two-thirds savings on the annual cost in terms of what we absorb. We, the provision does require us to pay the late enrollment penalty for those people who, at that time in 2011, had not enrolled in a timely manner. Everyone thereafter, if they enroll late, they pay their own penalty. So it's a diminishing list over time of people, and it costs us about $300 to $400 a month in return for significant savings, certainly in five figures on an annual basis. So that was the other item that was asked about. And then the last item was a question about school choice expenditures that appear on our vouchers. The cover page always shows you what funds are charged, the expenses that we're paying through the vouchers. And typically, we do not charge things to the school choice fund with few limited exceptions. If we do have a school choice student who's out of district, because that amount is paid by the sending community, not by MERSD, we make sure to charge the expense that we pay to that fund. And then when the reimbursement comes, it comes as revenue, which wipes that away. We keep that out of the general fund budget, because it's not really a district expense. In the Department of Ed terms, we are not financially responsible. So that's why you'll see that when we do pay the bill for those items. And I think those are the three questions. If there are any thing I said that wasn't clear, or people had other questions about the vouchers, happy to answer them.
Anna has her hand up. Anna?
No questions from me. I just want to make a comment that, Abby, thank you for preparing the spreadsheet and then to categorize into the budget category. I thought it was super helpful. Today, for the vote, I will still be voting no, just out of the principle that the cash balance is still missing. But I, we already talked about it in the finance subcommittee meeting yesterday, that you start providing that going forward. But I just want to make a comment that what you have, the adjustments that you have made, is great.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you for the explanations, Abby, also. All right, by roll call, Matt.
Yes, and just real quickly, I apologize, my computer's acting completely crazy, so I have to restart and come right back online. So I'll be back in five minutes. But yes.
Thank you, Matt. Anna? Erica?
Yes.
Matt? Oh, he already said, we already said Matt. Kate?
Yes.
Jake? And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, Pam, let me ask you, so our subcommittee reports would typically be pretty quick, but I know we have some policy work. Do we want to reorganize the agenda to prioritize the presentation, or do we want to get through this? You're on mute, Pam.
I think we can make quick work of the reports and then dedicate the remainder. But if you feel differently, I'm, I'll leave it to your judgment.
No, that's, that's fine. I just, where we have some policy, a vote to take, I just didn't know. So I think that's fine. The facilities subcommittee, we have not met, and the bulk of everything is tonight anyway. So that was quick. Finance Subcommittee, as Anna mentioned, we met yesterday. We got to ask our questions about the warrants for tonight, and then we got to dive into some of the budgetary, learning about the budgetary aspects of the special education program, and ask lots of questions about that. No action other than that. What's next? Policy. Jake or Erica, would you like to?
Erica, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
All right, so we forwarded you some recommended updates. This is a first read of the policy. We are not voting on it tonight. This is for our review and the public's review. And if you have any comments, please forward them on to the policy committee here. And functionally, they are updates to reflect the legislative changes. They are relatively minor. They do not change the fundamental way we operate, the one that might have, which is the single signer authority we are holding off on until we're more settled and understand the implications of that. So even the two new policy sections here are very minor and not a significant change. I'll let Abby speak. If I'm, if I'm misspeaking, Abby, Abby can correct me. But functionally, these are, are general updates that reflect legislative changes and should not affect our operations at all.
With that characterization, thank you, Jake.
Okay. And I know we did have a chance, and some people have sent some questions in. So is, do we want to just, for, since this is just a first read, and we don't need to vote on anything, just let the questions go there in the interest of time for tonight? And then maybe set aside a little bit more next time if we need to?
I think that's a good strategy, unless there's something burning.
Is there anything? So, anyone, anyone have a burning question about this? That must happen tonight? Okay. In that case, I will say thank you. It was very thorough and comprehensive, the information. So I really appreciate that, the work that you are doing on that. And we don't have to vote to accept the first read. This just is the first read, right? I'm still.
You should take a vote to accept it as the first read.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept this as the first read?
We'll make that motion. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A little second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I ask what, what we're voting on. If we voted that this is the first read, what does that mean? Just mean that this is a draft that we all agree?
Presented to the school committee for review and comment, and just the comments can either be made here, if they're urgent, or can be sent forward to the policy committee with the anticipation that they'll review them and integrate where they can.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Functionally, this gets, Pam, this gets posted as well with our, with our minutes and whatnot, so the public can also review these and submit comments too, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. In the absence of further discussion, we will go by roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Thank you for your work on this. And negotiations. Kate, Chris is not here, so it's you.
Um, right. We have not met since our last school committee meeting, so there is not much of an update, other than we are meeting again tomorrow, and negotiations are ongoing.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the subcommittee reports. Superintendent's report, Pam.
Yep, it's going to be very quick. So I just wanted to give a shout out tonight to the girls' field hockey team, who are going to get underway in about 24 minutes to hopefully take the next step towards state finals. But we're never looking past the team in front of us, so I'm sure it's going to be a challenge tonight. But they are on a roll, and we're really happy for them. And really, all the fall sports teams, with Diego not being here and able to cover kind of student news, all of our fall teams made it into postseason play and had a great showing. It's been a really fun fall, very pre-pandemic-esque on campus. So just been really proud of them, their sportsmanship, and just a great run for the entire athletics department this fall. So cheers to them. And just a few quick, fun things. I'm not seeing if my slides are changing. There we go. So just a quick around the school. Last week, mostly want to just touch base. We don't have to get into a long discussion about it tonight, but last week was that funky week of Election Day and conferences and half-days. And in the past, we had been, we had done a couple of different things. Most recently, a half-day on Monday, followed by a no-school Election Day for conferences. And through the calendar process last year, we changed process and tried to, because we have the Memorial School open now in a way of allowing for Election Day to happen without closing down school, we thought it would, collectively, we thought it would be a good idea to take the half-day and the full-day PD, no-school for students, and compact them together at the end of the week. So it gave families options on how to use their time. So if you've gotten any feedback from that, we'd love to hear it. During that time, during that shortened week, we celebrated Veterans Day. The Memorial School and the Middle School traditionally are our two schools that have Veterans Day celebrations. Shout out to the Middle School Academy kids and the Middle School band, who hosted the day and prepared speeches and did introductions. They, they were just absolutely fabulous, very much in line with some of what we would like to see through our strategic plan in terms of authentic demonstrations of learning, where they took on a project and then actually had to host, host an assembly and share their knowledge and their learning with the entire school community and the guests. So thanks to Teresa and Chris for coming and supporting our kids in that. Similarly, at the Memorial School, we had students hosting veterans from the community to come in and read aloud to class. Students greeted the veterans, escorted them, introduced them to their classes, and then had an opportunity to learn from them and ask questions. So it was a really nice celebration in our community. I can't go without saying, going back to the middle school, that Padula Plant is our teacher lead at the Middle School Academy, and she has been honored by the veterans in our community as an outstanding educator for her commitment to recognizing service and honoring service. So that was just a really uplifting day. We did the K-8 parent and caregiver conferences. Reports from principals are that they went off without a hitch. Very positive interactions. Wonderful to have people back in the buildings again. I know they still offer virtual opportunities for people who, who it makes it easier for them to schedule, but it was nice to see parents coming in and out and making, making use of being able to meet with a teacher in person. And the high school does it a little bit differently. On that release day, they had another full PD day, and they met with Jeff Parati from the Department of Ed. He runs the Save and Support of Schools Division. This is a presentation on gender issues, and they were, he was invited by the students of the Gay-Straight Alliance to come and talk to the staff about issues that were of concern with, for them, and provide some training so that they could better relate to some of this, some of the, some of the students in the school, and some of the experiences that the students are having. So another great shout out to our students for stepping up and leading the way in identifying areas for us to improve and get better, and better connect with them so that they can have a more safe and supportive environment in which to access the education. So all of those things are, in one way or another, connected to some of our goals in the strategic plan. Then we've got to give another shout out to the SBC on leather on the call tonight, and our project architectural team, project management team, and our construction team for achieving LEED Gold status at Memorial School. Without getting into all the details, essentially, it is a designation of highest order for environmental and sustainability, environmental and sustainability efforts to create a green school. So we, like with the middle high school, we have achieved certification there. And that's two shout-outs to keep on your radar screen. High school report cards are coming out tomorrow. I'm mentioning that because the high school runs on a very different schedule from the, from K-8. K-8 runs on trimesters. High school runs on, what we probably know better from our experience in schools, quarters. So report cards are out tomorrow. That means we're a quarter, quarter of the way through the year. And the National Honor Society induction ceremony is on this Thursday night. So we'll try to be getting dates out to the committee of things that might be of interest to them. And that's a, that's a night that honors our students for their academic and leadership successes. So that, that's all I have from around the schools.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's appreciation. Does anyone on the committee have questions for Pam, based on what she presented there? Report cards are out, Pam.
She had the 15th. Oh, today is the 15th.
A day off.
I am a day off.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you very much. So we will move on to continued business. And my mind was on sports, having seen off the field hockey team earlier, and I erroneously said, welcome to Galen Associates. And of course, it's Habib and Associates that are presenting tonight, and we're very grateful to have them here. So I will turn the time over to Pam and Abby and our guests from Habib and Associates. Just as a awareness factor for the committee and for those paying attention here, after the presentation, we will have time for questions. We're going to invite our, our participants from the SBC, who are joining us from the SBC, to ask their questions first, and then committee members will afterward be able to ask our questions as well. We're grateful for the expertise and experience that their, their perspective will bring to those questions. So with that, take it away.
Thanks, Teresa. I'm going to do a quick introduction to the presentation, and then kick it over to Habib and Associates. And I'm sure Abby will be answering lots of questions when they conclude, in terms of how it fits in with some of our capital planning. And the Habib team will be able to answer any detailed questions about the presentation. I'm just going to provide you the why. Why are we doing this tonight? And what is the question? Why are we doing this tonight? What's the purpose of their investigation and their facilities report? And how can that help us in our upcoming budget planning scenarios? So one of the reasons we're doing this tonight is because we have learned through ongoing collaboration with the two towns that the timeline for Essex Elementary repair, renovate, or replacement is going to factor into some of the strategy on the town's part for how they may approach our budget requests this year. So we thought it would be timely to try and have the big picture question answered tonight. And I, and I frame it as the big picture question. We're not going to have all of the details available to, for us tonight on how to go, we have big picture, how to go forward, but we, we aren't going to have every little thing we want in place for a capital plan that lays out year to year what Jason and Abby are going to be managing. That's going to be part two. That's coming a little bit later in the month. What you're going to hear tonight is a big picture assessment based on the work that the team has done, that will help guide us in determining one of the timeline scenarios that are before you. What, what you see in front of you, if you're able to be looking at a screen, is the hypothetical EES timing scenarios that we put forward last year as part of budget season. They're actually older than last year's budget season, but we did memorialize them in our public hearings. And it's based on what we think we know as laypeople about the building. It's not based on any hard assessment data. But what we've been toying with is trying to reconcile whether or not we begin with an application to MSBA right now, this year, at the close of the Memorial School project, to get in the pipeline and start to address issues that we think we're seeing, or whether or not we have a timeline of years, five, 10, 13, and some scenarios, to push out the work on EES. Is there a way to keep it viable for a few years that makes good common sense, and then try to time the big investment with the roll-off of debt from the middle high school? I think what we'll hear tonight is a little bit of what we have to think about in trying to make that decision, and some professional opinion about the state of Essex, and which of those timelines may or may not be appropriate for us to consider. So with So with that in mind, I'm going to kick it over to the Habib team and ask them if they actually have sharing rights that they can see, because I don't have the presentation in front of me.
Evening. We, we do have the, do have the presentation. We have sharing rights, I think.
If not, Pam, I can always forward it back.
Yeah, I'm working on, they are, oh. There you go.
First, I'm going to start by introducing myself. My name is Tom McLeod, and Steve Habib is here with me. We've been working, we've been working on this needs assessment for Essex Elementary and Manchester Essex Regional High School with Avi and Jason for a while now. We're still in the draft format, but again, this is, as Pam had mentioned, you know, sort of a good overview of where we are and where this is going. As I think everyone's aware, Essex Elementary was originally built in 1957. The main building, the back addition here with the gym, was built in 1975. So the main building's been around for 65 years. It's, it is definitely showing its age. And that's what we're, that's what we're addressing. Some of the elements that are really problematic in the school is the fact that we're dealing with, there's one boiler. The boiler was installed in 1975, so that's 47 years old. My understanding is that the, the burner itself came from the boiler at Memorial School before. So this predates the construction of the new school. So the boiler, like I say, is getting up there in age. There is another boiler in the mechanical room. It's not working. It's not functional. So the school is, is counting on this one boiler for heat and, and hot water for the facility. One of the other major issues we're talking about is the roof itself. Goes back to 1998, so it's 24 years old. Usually, we ballpark 20 to 25 years as a, a long stretch for a roof, especially a roof like this, a single membrane roof. As you can see, there's been a number of patches on the roof. This has been the main joint, one of the main joints or all the main joints have been stripped in with new material. All these white spots that you see are sealant that's been added to the roof. Long story short, it's a lot of, it's a lot of Band-Aids to keep the roof tight for the moment. While we're out there, and it's very hard to see, there's actually, in a couple of locations, we saw three locations in particular. There are actually bubbles in the roof, which is, indicates that there's moisture getting in underneath. So there are some ongoing issues with the roof that, you know, need to be addressed. Looking at the outside of the building. Pretty much all the wood siding is failing one way or another. There's quite a bit of rot at the base. You can see it's pulling away at this point. These window sills, or actually, if you look at, this was an example of a window, but you can see that the sills are not in good condition. The windows themselves, though, the newer addition, the '75 addition, they're in slightly better condition. The main building, in many cases, has its original, original windows, most of which are aluminum, if not thermally broken. I think, as most people know, aluminum is a great heat sink. It transfers heat very well. I wouldn't be surprised if in the wintertime, there actually is the possibility of frost forming on the inside of these windows, the window frames. The windows themselves, in most cases, are a single pane. They're not thermal pane windows. And in a number of the windows that we saw, there's no weather stripping on the window itself. So the closure is, is metal on metal, which is, which is far from tight. We've heard instances of kids wearing their coats in the classrooms. And I wouldn't be surprised if that's part of what's playing into it. We've looked at some of the costs. And again, this is a sort of broad brush, very high altitude scope of costs and things that need to be done. But we're looking at some of these things that specifically, scope one, that has a direct effect on the academics itself. The boiler, if that goes out in February, you're looking at a problem. You're looking at closing down the school for a period of time. Again, initially, you know, we're looking at a price of around $450,000, $500,000 there. The roof, which again, one of the problems you run into with leaking issues is now you're introducing moisture, water in the building. Then you can start looking at mold issues. And that can, that can just mushroom that pot. But I mean, that can mushroom terribly. HVAC, again, much of the HVAC system in the building is 65 years old. And as we were discussing the windows, again, the windows are a real detriment to the school. There have been a few that have been replaced here and there. But overall, the window systems are not in good condition. If you look at some of the other issues that are secondary, scope two, the playing field has some real drainage issues. You know, we're looking at possibly $375,000 or some numbers of that magnitude to upgrade the drainage system. There's masonry, some masonry repair on the building. I will say, overall, for the age of the building, the masonry is not in terrible, not in terribly bad shape. But there is repair work that needs to be done. Many of the exterior doors, some have been replaced. Many of them are rusting or starting to rot out. So there are issues there. Kitchen equipment, some of the kitchen equipment, I believe, goes back to 1957. Wogen oven that's in the middle of the kitchen is, is an antique. Just basic, basic upkeep, painting the interior, looking at new flooring and, you know, mechanical upgrades. Some fairly pricey issues. Again, this is sort of just a recap of looking at some of those numbers. You know, scope one are things that should be done within the next maybe two years, ideally the next two years. Scope two, three to five years. Scope three is a little complicated. This is looking, we're looking at issues here that can be further out. But some of these issues are driven by, if, like, as far as handicap accessibility. If we surpass a certain value of the building, then we have to bring things up to meet current handicap codes. So at that point, that's when some of the interior items come into effect. X items, and again, it's the, the toilet rooms generally that some have attempts at meeting the handicap code, the Architectural Access Board code requirements. They're not per the code. So there are issues there that need to be, that need to be addressed. And as we've talked about, you know, there are mechanical issues throughout the building, going back to the boiler issue. And my, again, much of the mechanical system itself goes back to 1957. Again, with the electrical, the base system of the building goes back to 1957. So we're looking at some relatively old systems that are showing their age. And before, and I don't believe they're truly, I won't say a safety issue at the moment. Again, they're well past or they're really approaching, if not at or past, the end of their, their life.
So see if they want to. I'll make a few comments with respect to this, Tom, and, and committee members. We looked at the existing building from the perspective of the space needs and conducted an assessment of those. And what you'll see on the right side of the screen, and I don't know if that's, hopefully you can at least get a little glimpse of it. But on the right side, that chart shows what the, a new elementary building in terms of square footage, what a new elementary building would have in terms of square footage and spaces for an occupancy of 250. Now, currently, the occupancy is less than that. Enrollment is less than that, but rounding up a bit brings us to 250. So the good news is, or I should say that the existing building has the square footage, actually in excess of the square footage, that you would program using the MSBA guidelines. It has more square footage than you would program for an elementary building of 250 students. Now, that comment that's lacking programmatically, there are elements and there are spaces within the building that have not really been modified to reflect the current needs and the current educational program. The, the space is there, but there would want to be some, some work and some reallocation, as they say, of spaces. I think that probably sums it up. Now, this is, this is a plan that shows the current usage of the existing building. And I realize it's a little challenge, maybe a little challenging to read. But, you know, the core academic spaces are in the, I'll call it a peach. At least it is on our screen as a peach color. And then the special education classrooms and areas are a little bit more of yellow. There are two kindergarten classrooms, and they are of an acceptable size. One thing that they, that is missing is that normally we would expect to have a, a functioning toilet room for each of those kindergarten rooms. And it would be accessible directly from the room. That does not occur with, with the current kindergartens. You can, you can see the other colors represent, you know, other uses in the building. And there is adequate space. It's simply a matter of, you know, reallocating some of the space for, for current programs.
So, okay. So in the end, recommendations in looking at this is because of the age of, the age of the school, the amount of work that needs to be done, we would suggest that option A would be a complete renovation of the existing school building at a projected preliminary cost of $26 million or $243 a square foot. Or, I'm sorry. Option B, we're looking, the other option is a new, to start with a new elementary school. That would be smaller and square footage. Again, based on the MSBA standards, it would only need to be about 45,000 square feet based on the current enrollment. That, we have a preliminary cost of approximately $32 million or $710 a square foot.
These square foot costs are taken from the MSBA website in terms of recently begun projects. Now, that, that's in today's dollars at this point, because we have no way to project out how many years before things move forward. So you can see it's a, it's a, it's going to be significantly greater than this.
Now, the other side of this goes back to Manchester Essex Regional High School. And the future work or the future maintenance and repair work that will have to happen there at some point in the not-too-too-distant future. As we're looking at the school, now, keeping in mind that the existing school is 13 years old. Some of the systems are about halfway through their usable lifespan. We talk about things like the roofing system, some of the HVAC system components, the air handling units, the rooftop chiller, the boilers. Many of these things are running in the 20, 25-year range. HVAC tends to run closer to 25. But if we're 13, if we're 13 years in, 23 to 28. So we're putting this, putting this right, like I say, virtually at the halfway point of some of these items. And these are things that the school system needs to start thinking about. These are costs that will be coming up. And again, this is sort of a similar run-through. Scope one, things that need to be done fairly soon. Scope two, three to five. Scope three, the grandfathered aspect really doesn't apply here. But, you know, these are things that will need to be done at some point. Again, this would be things like this building envelope. The big, big ticket item here we'd be talking about would be the roof, doing the roof replacement. We look at scope two for interior items. Some of these are things like replacing the carpeting in the auditorium. You know, we noticed in walking through, there are already some issues with seams starting to delaminate, some wear on steps and things like that. Items that, again, may not fall in the zero to two range, but may fall in the three to five range. But again, items that need to be thought about. You know, things like, again, like carpet is a good example. You know, it doesn't last, you're not going to get 20 years out of it. We look at some of the mechanical. One of the items we carry here under a scope one item is something that we've been talking, that was brought up, about providing or adding a water filtration system that, one of the issues with the mechanical system that is, is an ongoing issue is because of some of the corrosive minerals that are in the water system itself, there's already been a number of cold mixing valves, valves that have already had to have been replaced just because of that, that issue. So that's one of the things we're, we're looking at here under mechanical at this point in time, is the possibility of adding a new water filtration system just so that, again, it's sort of a preemptive thing to help save money further down the road as far as limiting the number of valves and components that need to be replaced because of the corrosive aspects of the water system. So again, as we're coming down through here. As you're looking at big numbers, I mean, we're looking at. You know, ten million dollars in, within the next, I'll say, within the next ten years. That will need to be put aside for work on that school, you know, as things wear out. You know, it's just, it's the nature of. Exposure to weather, the use of the systems. So overall. If we're combining. The cost of the two, uh, the two schools, looking at what, uh. They're going to cost overall. By the time we're all said and done, we're looking at a. A fairly substantial number. We're looking at, you know, over forty-two million.
That is, that has been inflated. Some of the, some of the items of six percent is not really. Built into this particular. Study because it, it has. Inflation, as we know, has been, has been rising steadily, so.
Anything over to you, that does include soft costs.
It does, and it does include soft costs as well. Correct.
Again, we're recommending the next steps. Looking at, I think you're looking at in the not too distant future, you're a major renovation or replacement of the Essex Elementary School. That's going to be based on the submitting to the MSBA. And the other part of it is to plan for future high school expenditures. I know it's nice, it is a nice school, it's in very good condition, it's very well kept. You really want to maintain that. It's, it's an excellent facility. That you would hate to see start losing ground because things are not maintained. So with that, we'll ask, are there any questions or?
Thank you very much. Uh, there's a lot to process here and I'm sure we do have questions. Avi or Pam, do you want to add anything before we invite, um, first our SBC members to ask their questions?
The only thing I would. Ask as we kind of engage in the, in the Q and A is. We're not setting out to make a decision tonight whether we're renovating or repairing, we're just seeking to understand. The situation and how it maps out over the next few years. That decision will be governed by an MSBA process. So there'll be an entire structure around that conversation. It will engage the community, it will engage our town partners. So that's, that's a future step. The intent of this report and these findings are to help guide the timeline for getting there. So just kind of a reminder, we don't have to solve all the problems tonight.
Perfect. Thank you. Avi, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, thank you. And thanks to Steve and Tom for a great presentation. I think, I guess I'll just provide my own. Mental wrapper, how I think about some of this very briefly, which is just that. We have two different buildings with two different types of needs and strategies and I think, um. I'm glad to hear that, uh, the team that's been there feels like we're doing a good job maintaining. The middle high school and you know from school committee vouchers that we've talked quite a bit about our increase in preventative maintenance. Over the past several years and, and that was recognized by MSBA, which is great. So really. These numbers tell us like, what do we need to start setting aside? And we've been doing that. Those types of expenditures through reserve funds. And we might need a strategy to replace those reserve funds, I think, for some of the things that are not. Full building changes like the middle school, high school numbers that are big, or, or maybe there's a different funding strategy. Really, obviously the headline. Here is how do we think about what's happening with the Essex Elementary School and, um. I know we've talked in the past about just the program equity. Um, and how much we've been investing already to try to do our best to maintain program equity, but. The facility is kind of a different matter. So, um. It's helpful to see this. We've really relied on Habib and Associates in the past. And I think. When we went through the memorial and Essex process before we went through building a new school. This really helped us to just get. An objective sense of what some of the numbers are so we can figure out how much are things that we can do on our own. And how much are things that really require a much different type of funding strategy? So I just want to thank everyone and. For, for, uh, on the Habib and Associates, uh, team for helping us to kind of get to this point of the evaluation.
Thank you, Avi. Okay. So I see someone has already figured out how to use the raise hand feature. So yes, anyone who is, um, joining us from, uh, the Memorial School SBC. You are invited to use the raise hand feature and, um, when you ask your question for the benefit of our committee. Making connections also, if you would just give a very, very brief introduction of who you are and why you serve on, on the SBC or in what capacity. So I see Annie has her hand up, please.
Hi. I don't know why I joined the SBC. Um. So.
It's not what I meant, fresh.
So I just have a few questions. So, uh. I, I'm not committing, I'm not committing you to anything, but if you could tell me what you think. You know, MSBA would classify this as, I mean, are you, it, it, you can't put option A as a renovation. So is your gut telling you that if we submitted this, that they would choose renovation rather than rebuild?
I, I can give you an opinion with respect to that.
I like opinions.
Okay. Well, my opinion is that they will do neither of those things. They will, um, as you went through with the memorial school. They will require a very in-depth, comprehensive feasibility study. That evaluates, um, the options. And, and those, those are the options that they require you evaluate on. Keep the existing building and renovate. Do an addition, renovate or, uh, do a new building and that, that gets flushed out in that feasibility study phase. And, uh. When you submit to them. You simply say. We, we need help, as you did with Memorial School, we need help, this is why. And they will hopefully invite you in to the program. And then it, it, it just, it moves from there.
Okay. And, um, just are there any, and I, you don't necessarily have to answer this, but are there any MSBA programs that we can, uh, leverage for? Some of those high school expenditures, uh, any grant programs or can we use that green grant that we have, um? You know, I'm just trying to think of different strategies to attack some of those capital costs at the, at the middle high school.
I, I am not aware of any, uh, I, I, I do know that, um. I was at a, a conference today where, uh, Jack McCarthy, the. Director of the MSBA. Reported that their, their, uh. For a period of time, they are stopping their accelerated repair program. Although for that, for the middle high school, that wouldn't apply anyway, but you know, it could have potentially applied for some of the items at, um. At the Essex Elementary. But they, they've put that program on hold because they are short of funds. And, uh, they're, they're sticking with what they call their core programs, their core projects. Uh, which are the large scale expenditures. That would be, you know, either major renovations or additions, renovations or new buildings.
Okay.
There may be some other. Grant programs that have developed in the state. I mean, there's a big movement toward, obviously toward, uh, conservation and, and green elements and sustainability. What could come out of that? I, I always. Really speculate. I don't know, I mean, if you know, maybe. Could be there.
The last part of what you said was a little hard to hear, Steve, could you just say that again?
In terms of the, uh, uh, state possibly moving toward. Some form of grant program or energy conservation or sustainability.
Yeah.
I don't know, they could, and I didn't know if you knew of any grants that. Maybe available.
I can very briefly just remind the committee that we have been participating. With the town of Essex and the Green Communities Grant Program. And that has really helped, uh, already with Essex Elementary. I think close to about half a million dollars has gone into the buildings from state funds. Basically to help improve the energy efficiency of what we have. The biggest item was a three-phase program, uh, for our, our digital control system. That controls, uh, how heating works, when it comes on, when it comes off, set points, et cetera. And moving away from a dysfunctional old system that had been, you know, pneumatic based. I don't. Think that, uh, the middle school, high school would be likely to qualify because it's got. Highly energy efficient equipment that was installed in it. So. That program really is designed to bring older equipment into the kind of twenty-first century, so to speak. So I, I think one of the great things about the middle school, high school is how high efficiency. The heating systems were, um, and, uh, that's part of the reason, going back to the earlier part of the presentation, why. We were, you know, did a great job of the prior SBC did a great job, uh, getting us recognized, um, for our, uh, our green program. At the middle of school, high school. So not sure that would help us.
Annie, you muted yourself. I see you talking.
Thanks, Teresa. I guess the, the only, I, I do want to hear from Gordon and Tyler because they're kind of the, the technical folks that are, that know this stuff, but. The numbers seem, um. Low, um, you know, twenty-six for a reno looks. Like too good to be true and, um. And I think we were building at five something, five oh five per square foot when we did memorial. I don't remember the exact numbers, but. You're at four seventy-three for reno and then seven-ten for new construction. So. I just, I would hate to like get our hopes up and then. Find out that the numbers, um. Don't true out. So. But thank you very much for this. I think there's no surprises. We solved a lot of this stuff and. You know, we value your, um, perspective. You guys did a great job for us. Before and it's great that we were able to maintain this relationship and that you know our district as well as you do. So thanks for your feedback and, and, uh, the report.
All right. Thank you, Annie. Anyone else on SBC? I know she called us a couple of specific names there.
This is Gordon, if I may.
Please.
Can I, can I lead in by saying I've enjoyed the experience in working with Annie? On the school building committees in the last two schools in Manchester and Essex. So, so she can't get away from it. So a brief history of me, I, I live in, I live in Manchester. I was on the school building committee for the, for the failed. Middle school, high school before the recent one. I was on the middle school, high school now, and I've been on the elementary school and. A bunch of other things in town. Uh, my experience level is I was, I've been on these building committees so long, I finally retired. So it's, uh, I worked for, uh, an architectural engineering firm in, in Cambridge for forty years. And my job was project management of the full array of building development from. From start to finish, whatever that building might to be. So, uh, and I agree with what Andy just said too. I, I applaud. The work that Habib did for us on the other schools in Manchester. And this one also, uh, we had the opportunity to go through the school and to look at it firsthand. And on the way through it, I was taking notes of what I saw. That, that first, first superficial look of, uh, what needs to be done. And I agree wholeheartedly, the infrastructures in, in dire straits in Essex Elementary School needs, needs. I would say repair, I would say replacement before I would say repair. And I agree with everything, deciding the windows, the boiler, the roof replacement and all that needs to be done. And I also appreciate the fact that they took a look at the interiors and looked at, uh, more of architectural finishes needing re. Repair and replacement as well. I agree with that a hundred percent. And I also agree with their long-term assessment of needing, uh, needing, uh, mechanical overhaul. I would however, if I, if I may, I, I wrote something with Annie. Probably, I don't know, like four or five months ago with here, but if there is a way to somehow. To improve the architectural finishes or features within the building to give it something. If we, if we stay in the renovation track, to give it something that has a look and feel of a new building that's more contemporary. Up to date, would be that with materials or be it what, whatever. But I wholeheartedly agree with what Habib has come up with, uh, as far as the assessment of what to do. As far as the high school, I agree. I agree. That's just, time is taking its toll. And, uh, upgrade as the, the equipment means its, means its usable life has to be done. So overall, um, the idea of personally, if, if I were to weigh in on. What my choices would be, whether you renovate or replace with new school. I would replace it with a new school, obviously, uh, notwithstanding the circumstances and costs that go along with all that. Major renovation will be. Extremely helpful. I, I was very surprised to see how well-maintained that building was. However, a major renovation would be continuing to improve. An already old building versus replacing it with a new without it. And I tend to agree with what Andy said too, as far as some pricing is concerned here. There is so much to look, if we go, if we go with a major renovation, it's one thing. There is, uh, certain inherent costs that go along with, uh, the unknowns about new school. I think it's going to be, uh, the idea of building a new school, probably in the fields in the back and all that's associated with that. Including the renovation or, or demolition and removal of the existing school. There's a lot to consider. Okay. On, on that note, I will shut up and I will pass, pass the baton.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you for your, your insight and your comments. And I am going to, so using the hand raised feature, I see Jake has his hand up and for our committee members as a heads up, Jake, um. Also served on the SBC, has been serving on it for a number of years. So we're going to let him jump the line here. Go ahead.
Actually, I just want to ask more of a clarification question than substance at this point. So thank you all for the work you've done. I want to understand a little bit about your scope one, two, three, uh, levels. For the middle and high school, that seems to make sense, right? There, there are updates that are based kind of on a timeline. I can understand how that works. For the Essex Elementary, I want to understand your assumptions about the timeline, the work to be done on those timelines. Relative to undertaking, uh, either a renovation or a new work. Is that scope one, two and three work for EES? Assuming that we're keeping the current building as is? Or is that still? The case if we engage in a renovation MSBA project? In other words. Do we need to spend eleven million dollars to get to a construction process? Which potentially could cost twenty million dollars? Or are there some things in scope one that if we're going to engage in a, uh, MSBA project, we don't need to do?
Yes, there are. I think, um. It's, but it's a matter of time, Jay. And, and. As we sit here. When we go through a building, in many ways, we're trying to predict the future. And, and when something will reach a point where, you know, it really needs to be done. There are a number of things that, uh, you know, that could fall into that category. Now, if, if the roof. Would, um, develop some major leaks, for instance. And that, uh, and that continues to cause problems with the roof structure and the insulation and what. At, at some point, it, it. Say, okay, enough is enough. We need to replace it. So I think, I think yes, it's not as if these are currently. Such a state that they pose an immediate hazard or, or a safety issue or that. It's a matter of, uh. When will they get to the point where it doesn't make sense to try and, and keep going with that system? That makes sense.
Well, and I think, I was just going to add too, I think the unknown is. In, during this process, whether you're going for a major renovation, and I think everybody. At least we're in agreement. That you really need to do one of two things. I mean, the school either needs a very major, I'll say a gut renovation. or a new school. And the question is that how long does that process take to get to that point? And what needs to be done to either keep Essex Elementary going while a new school is built? Or what temporary facilities do you have to provide during a gut renovation? Or how that's phased? There's a number, number of different questions that are going to play into that. So, yeah, it's, there's really no yes or no answer on that.
I think Pam had a comment she might have wanted to add to this.
Don't want to cut Jake off if he had a follow-up.
Go ahead, Pam.
Well, this was a question that I had had earlier, too. So maybe I'm restating the obvious, but I think some in reading this, it struck me that the list and the identification of the needs and the categorization by scope isn't a prescription for a piecemeal approach to renovation, that when we're talking renovation, it really is. It might as well be a full building replacement because that's the scope of work that needs to be done. The level of design, the level of forethought, the level of planning and the and the physical impact on the site is going to render it useless for a little bit of time. Am I understanding that correctly? Because I can see where people are thinking, can we create a multi-year capital plan to buy 10 years based on what's here? And I'm not seeing that, but that's, I may have had a predisposition to that going in.
I think you're right. I would absolutely agree.
I think it would be short sighted to think about this and it's okay, we need to do scope 1 work right away and we're going to do, you know, other scopes as we move forward.
And I think one of the things that the scopes approaching it that way really points out is how much work really needs to be done to this building and how soon. And it really points out that economical way to do this would be a major renovation rather than the piecemeal approach.
So I just wanted, I think I hear, I'm not quite sure what I'm hearing, but let me just see, let me just tell you what I think I hear and you can confirm it. What I hear you saying is that the stuff in scope 1 is going to need to be done almost no matter what. That there is nothing in scope 1 that would not be necessary if we engage in an MSBA process in a timely manner. Because even the time to get into that process is going to require us to do scope 1. Is that a correct assumption?
It depends on how rapidly you can move in to the MSBA process.
It's not going to be within two years before they start construction.
Right. And these items, I would anticipate that you would be watching closely and making determinations as to do we need to do something immediately? Or can we live with it until we get to that stage where, you know, where the bigger project occurs? Again, it's in many ways, we're trying to predict future failure in a sense.
What we're not saying here, what we're not doing is looking at some of the possible, I'll say Band-Aid approaches. You know, again, there may be things that could be done to make the windows tighter. Maybe weather stripping, you know, the peel and stick, weather stripping could be added. Or there may be other things that can be done to get a little more mileage while the process is going on. But, I mean, we've got to look at it as this is something that needs to be, this is an item that needs to be replaced. And this is going to be the replacement cost for, now whether it can be stretched to meet the, you know, to work within the MSBA process or not. That's something, you know, we'd have to, we really just have, we can't really address that.
Okay, thank you.
It's more, look, if you're going to keep this building and keep it operating long term, you know, this scope 1 is our recommendation that you do those soon. It's not necessarily you have to do it. But if you're going to, we look at it from the perspective of, okay, the regional school system wants to keep this building operating. We are highly recommending that if you want to keep this building operating long term, sometime over the next couple of years, we use zero to two, but I mean, it could be three or four. But soon you want to address those items in option 1 or in scope 1.
If it would be helpful just to provide a little context from the last project that might also answer Jake's question. You know, once we knew we were in the pipeline with MSBA, we did try to hold off on any major capital repairs unless they became necessary. And some of you may remember that we actually had to install a new boiler at the last second, even though the project was going because we couldn't lose heat. That building had one boiler. So even with acceleration of moving to that, you have the risk, but you do have the ability. Think if I'm understanding Steve and Tom's comments and Jake's questions to say, you know, we're going to put those on pause, but I think you would never do that unless you were planning to go ASAP to MSBA. And so I think that that's, I think we definitely need some strategic direction from the school committee about that as a point either, you know, over the next, you know, over this budget cycle. Because if that is going to be delayed, you know, we have a lot of work to do and that includes fundraising for items where in Memorial, the farmland that was used was, you know, the community did not want to put good money after bad. So I just think those are the questions that we need school committees help to make some strategic decisions using this information. Jake, that helps.
Thank you, and thank you for your questions, Jake. Anyone else from the SBC have questions or commentary based on this presentation? Just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. If you don't know how to use the hand raise feature and you are on the SBC, you are welcome to just unmute yourself. Pam, go ahead.
Can I ask one quick question or maybe it's a clarifier? Because I know this was something that was discussed a lot with the last building project, which is Steve's provided some preliminary numbers about price per square footage of what it might cost to renovate or what it might cost to rebuild new. My recollection, and it could be a faulty one, is that that's a base cost, but we haven't gone through the process of designing to program or designing with public inputs about what is wanted or needed in the school. So we had one beginning number through a similar process for Memorial School years past. And we introduced some new concepts during the design phase that included a regulation-sized gym, certain features that we thought were important, some additional classroom spaces. So the end cost was very different than the preliminary cost that was just based on a straight square footage assessment. Steve, should we be anticipating the same type of thing here? That once we get into designing and envisioning what the new building will be and how to bring it online as a partner school to Memorial, that what we put into it might alter what your initial assessment is here?
Absolutely, Pam. And we didn't want to speculate as to where that exactly would go. So we're basing it on, you know, the straight MSBA listing of spaces for a 250-student elementary school. But you're absolutely correct. I'm confident things like, you know, a full-size gymnasium, other elements are going to come into play, but only the community really is the group that should be making those determinations. We did not want to speculate with respect to that.
Oh, completely understood. And then MSBA, for folks who may be new to the process, is going to do its own analysis and projection of enrollment. So we might be going in thinking 250, like opposite happened at Memorial. We went in thinking 450 and the numbers came back 350, so we ended up with less square footage. So there are a lot of variables that may change throughout the process.
Absolutely. And also the square foot cost that we were showing were taken from, you know, current projects that were already either close to being bid or bid. So, you know, we didn't try to, when it came time to looking at those options, we didn't try to project those forward because the number of years is really unknown.
Understood.
All right. I saw Lisa has a question and then we'll go back to Gordon. Go ahead, Lisa. You're on mute.
I had to unmute, sorry. Very quickly, my name is Lisa O'Donnell. I am on the school building committee representing Essex. My background is, well, I'm a structural engineer professionally. And I am a former selectman here in Essex and I'm currently on the planning board as well as the school building committee. My question is just if the presenters could provide a little context and thought about how a major renovation compares to a new school as far as amenities, programmatic sort of functionality for contemporary teaching as opposed to the models that were used in 1957 when the school was built? And the question is based in my concern that the way that school is laid out and just knowing how it's constructed, I'm kind of not seeing how it can be renovated in a way that's going to make it really meet current teaching models, for lack of a better word. I don't know enough about that, but I know what that school looks like and it doesn't look like a new school in Manchester.
Well, yeah, Lisa, you know, we would anticipate that a major renovation would also include some interior configuration adjustments. And if I believe it will function well, but will it function exactly the same in terms of a new building? No, it will not because, you know, building in breakout spaces in appropriate locations will be more challenging with that existing building. Things like that, that, you know, would be designed into a new building using that as a model, for instance. So it would, you know, you do give up a little bit with the renovation. I think it can function well, but it is going to have a slightly different feel. I hope that answers.
No, that does. And that's what I expected. And I guess sorry, I just wanted to hear a professional say it. That was my hunch and I just yeah, wanted to sort of get your feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Gordon, you have your hand up again. Go ahead.
So my question is actually, thank you, Lisa. My question follows along exactly on yours. I was just wondering about the viability of using the Essex Elementary footprint to bring that up to any kind of modern-day standards. And so it sounds like you've answered the question. It would not, it would not be like a new school, however, it would be as, I guess, as close as we could get within the building footprint and the structural mandates of that building.
Can I say, I think one of the biggest selling points of renovation is the square footage. Because that's, you're going to actually have more square footage to work with in a renovation and you're likely to end up with new construction.
How about the configuration of the current spaces, though? And the fact that it's a block building all the way? Make a difference.
And that's what Steve was talking about as far as some of the trade-offs. That you may, you know, you're not going to get the perfect design that you get with a new building. There's always going to be some compromises.
I think, you know, that's really the feasibility study phase. It's where these types of questions truly get delved into and fleshed out.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate it. However, when I walked through that building, I couldn't help but thinking, my God, if we had another foot in ceiling height here and another entranceway there and a slightly different configuration or orientation of the rooms. I understand the challenges of that because of the physical condition of the building, though. But thank you. Good answer.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone else using the hand raise feature, but anyone else on SBC wish to offer a question or a comment? Okay, seeing none, I will invite committee members to ask our questions. I'll hold mine for the end. I actually have had quite a lot of them answered already, which is very helpful. So current school committee members, do you have any questions? Okay, if nobody has any, I do. Oh, Jake, go ahead.
I was trying not to talk twice before others did.
No, please do.
So I want to ask actually a version of Annie's first question. If, knowing what kind of buildings are going up to MSBA recently, if we were to apply for MSBA, how might they look at this building relative to other applicants? In other words, is this in as bad shape as it's kind of sounding tonight? Or is it, you know, reasonable and they have other candidates that would be well ahead of us? Your opinion, please.
However, I will say this. Seeing a lot of other buildings in other communities and knowing that one element that they look at is the actual amount of space or the lack of, the lack of space for students to be taught appropriately can be a key element when they look at that building. And from that perspective, given that you have adequate space, I don't want to predict, but I mean, it could push you down a little bit on the list. I know that there's a lot of communities looking for, you know, that ability to get into that core program. It's a very good question, Jay.
I appreciate you taking a stab at it. Thank you.
MSBA work.
Pam, go ahead. I can't tell if it's just my audio or if it was cutting out a little bit there.
No, I can add on a little bit to what Steve had just said about we were the benef, we weren't a beneficiary of having lack of space, but having lack of space and inappropriate space at Memorial, I think accelerated our acceptance into the pipeline because at the time Memorial was peaking at over 430 students. For a school that was only ever built for K6. So they were, we were busting at the seams and adding classroom space in unconventional areas like a converted locker room or converted, you know, bathroom areas and things like that. So we won't have that component at Essex, and I think we've always known that going in, which is why we want to, why I would recommend it, we enter early because it may take a few go-arounds before we're accepted into the pipeline last time. I think it was quite out of the ordinary for us to get swept in right away. out of the ordinary for us to get swept in right away.
Any other committee or Jake, do you have any follow up there? Nope. Okay. Any other committee members have questions? Okay, I will ask mine, and this is this, I am, this is not my background. I did not serve on SBC in the past, so this may be a little bit silly, but knowing that the new building expectation is roughly a fifty year lifespan, is that, what is the expectation for a full renovation? Because it's down to a gut job, do we get the same length out of it, or is that compromised?
Well, that would be the expectation, because we've been talking about, you know, fully utility replacement, both system replacements throughout. So it would, the expectation, and particularly, you know, the way MSBA looks at it, the expectation is it's a fifty year building. Now, that does not mean that you don't have to do system replacements along the way, but the building would be, I mean, they would expect it to be a fifty year building.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Erica, go ahead.
Teresa just jogged my memory with the reference to the fifty year lifespan. One thing that I've been wondering about, and and I know this isn't unique to this project, but maybe you can give us some perspective based on what you've seen in the past. When we're talking about fifty years and a population estimate that's being performed today, how likely, how how good are those estimates typically? Because the one point of concern that's already been discussed is that a new building will actually reduce our square footage, which gives me some pause just not knowing what forty B projects are coming down the line, what things that might radically change populations in our different communities.
Well, we we would not retain to do a full, you know, enrollment projection long term, but one thing that would be done in doing such a such a projection, and and that's not really our forte, I have to say, but would be really delving into the buildable land within the towns, you know, within Essex, and doing a a real assessment of how much of that land could ultimately, you know, be be used for housing. I don't, I have, I don't know where where Essex stands with respect to affordable housing, whether you're close to ten percent or not. If you're not, then you're absolutely correct that that there could be lands available that could be affordable housing that would bring a lot of children into the into the school. It it doesn't mean that the building wouldn't be capable of being a fifty year building. It would mean that you need to do some expansion or build a building for that reason.
I have it hot off the press from a a select person joining us that we are at two point seven percent here in Essex for affordable housing.
Yeah, we have quite a ways to go. So yes, it's a very good question. Developments could come into town.
Teresa, can I ask one follow up to that?
Yes, take your questions, please.
And 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 so I I'm sorry, I wasn't sufficiently clear, because I do understand that you aren't retained to do a full enrollment projection. But in your experience, having seen, you know, I, my understanding is that the state funding agency will do this in connection with our proposal once it's submitted. And what I was wondering is, do we have information about how accurate those projections end up being? I imagine there's a lot of communities that, you know, maybe went through this twenty years ago. Do do they end up feeling like the state was way off base, or or is that something you just simply don't have perspective on?
As Pam, Pam answered.
Really varies. So if somebody else has a has a good understanding of that, and
I think it's not a technical understanding, it's more just experience. I think the reports, Nesdaq used to do it quite frequently. They still do. MSBA has now taken over and and does their own. I think they're great on, based on the demographics that are available to them, what they can't measure is what our community has dealt with, which is what appears to be significant fluctuations in available real estate. So we know that right now we're right around our average size, about twelve fifty. If you go back pre two thousand eight, we were at twelve fifty, a little bit lower, a little bit higher at thirteen fifty, but right around this benchmark. Then we had about a twenty percent surge from like the oh eight to twelve or thirteen time period when we really needed that first override. But now we're coming back down to our normal state. So we knew we would come back down based on the demographic projections and the birth rate, all of the things that will factor into their reporting. What we can't tell is now that we've built a new school and we have a great high school and a good program, and we're talking about building another elementary school, will there be some type of organization of circumstance that create a surge in people moving into town? So we can't account for that. I think the reporting that they do is spot on based on what's available to them to use as metrics. One thing we did do, Eric, I don't remember if, I don't know if you remember any of the conversations about Memorial School, but this is a real concern because of the experience we had when the new high school opened up, that we did get an influx of kids coming back to or moving into town, is that we did build in extra space. So when we go back to the original, to that original comment I made about the base price and what we may end up with after we go through the whole process, I think there was a lot of guidance from SBC and inputs from the community that don't build it too tight, because you want to have space available and don't want to have to be putting on an addition as soon as you open doors if we have a big, a big flowback of kids. So I think there's ways to to plan for it in our in our design process.
Abi, did you want to add something there? Sorry, your hand.
Yeah, this is just a question, maybe for Steve, Tom, or any of the SBC members. My recollection is that the MSBA actually requires you, and I know we have, we've even some project managers from our firm project here, too, requires you to have some contingency planning for variability in the design enrollment that they provide, so that you've got to go in with a design solution that can flex if you have enrollment that's greater. The other thing I would just say on the reliability to Erica's original question is that I think with one project, we ended up, you know, I think the enrollment was greater, like Pam said, another project enrollment was a little bit below. So I think one of the reasons MSBA, from what I've heard, has taken this in house and stopped using outside consultants is because they participate in the grant, they want as much control over the process as possible, and I think even they acknowledge that the process is really fraught. So I think you just, you do the best you can based on the birth rate information that you can get from them, and then then you have your contingency planning, if I'm recalling correctly, but I've got that wrong, please correct me.
All right. Any other committee members have questions at this time? So I have one, and it's a, it's a Pam and Abi question briefly. Is anything on our capital projects list already, or anything already on our capital projects list, our plan from the scope one suggestions? Are we already in, you know, budgeting on that?
Certainly, the boiler situation at that Essex Elementary is is probably the most obvious one. You know, we've actually been talking to Steve and Tom a little bit about our plans to try to get that underway, because we've been saying we don't want to go longer. And the numbers that they have are have been north of what we've been assuming. So we're kind of going through that process. I think what we saw with the Memorial School, knowing that we had a building close to the end of life, we really minimize the amount of design and engineering around it and kind of plug a unit into what we had, so to speak, which helped to save some costs, but we need to make sure that that's a prudent approach. And so in some of our conversations, it it may require further engineering, and if that's the case, certainly the cost will go up from what we estimated, and and the cost being carried here is, you know, in low several hundred thousands, whereas we were, I think, at around a hundred to hundred and fifty. So that could be a unpleasant surprise northward.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. I just couldn't remember off the top of my head what was on that on that list. I'm not seeing any other school committee questions, but I know we have two members of our member town select boards here, or at least two. So if if any of our select people would like to ask any questions, I know Anne and Ruth are here, and I don't know if I see anybody else. I invite you to ask your questions at this time, and after that, if there's still time, I might even open it up to to the public if anybody else has questions, because this is the opportunity we have while we have the team from Habib and Associates here. So any select people have any questions for the team at this point? I think they're both on phone. Oh, no, Anne's not.
On, Teresa, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Honestly, I think I'm just going to continue to watch the process unfold. I guess I'll throw my hat in the ring and say that I'm I'm more in favor of seeing a complete replacement of Essex Elementary than I am a renovation, especially given the numbers. I, you know, I'm a big believer in starting from scratch. We have a lot of problems at Essex Elementary. We have obviously a yard that floods, which they mentioned drainage, they they mentioned big ticket items. I would like to see a start from scratch. It costs more typically to renovate than it does to build new, and a twenty six million dollar build versus a thirty two, it's, you know, I mean, it's, yes, it's several million dollars, but you're kind of get what you pay for. So I'm just, my my two cents, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ruth. I appreciate that. Anne, did you want to go ahead?
I don't even have two cents. I'm enjoying the presentation and your very thorough questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Anne. Anybody else on the call? Because, like I said, we do have the opportunity right now that has any questions for the Habib group?
Can I just ask one question about kind of scope of deliverable?
Sure.
Given that the, and maybe this is an Abi question more than a a Steve and Tom question, but given that the way the scope one is assuming that we're keeping the building operating for a long time, or for the long term, I'm trying to use Steve's questions there. It would be nice if we had a list that is, you know, what's necessary just to keep it operating short term, like within three years, so that we, that could help our planning. I don't know if if the contract is set up for them to do that, or if we can do that afterwards.
I appreciate you asking that. I think that's absolutely what keeps me awake at night, and that's something I definitely want to be able to bring to school committee as part of this process. And I do think, I mean, Jason is here on the call. He's been an amazing source of getting this project going, and I know when he started to see some of the findings, his immediate thought is, what do we have to do? How quickly have to do it? Which is one of the reasons why we're so lucky to have him. So I do think that the process of turning draft into final involves getting, you know, a, all the details in something publishable, but also taking that information and having us bring it back to you during budget season to start to sketch out what some of our options are for the next couple of years. I think that's how we'll bring it to you, Jake, would be in options, so that school committee can make that decisions. And I do, I don't want to I don't want to put Steve on the hook here, but I do believe just knowing how we've worked in the past that conversations like that are things we could absolutely do. I think we will have enough of the information to do that without an additional contract scope. That would be my understanding. I think it would really just be more conversations as we do the prioritization process.
Absolutely, Abby. We'll, we'll, we're prepared to give you our our opinions with respect to these items and prioritizing and things like that. Absolutely.
Great. Thank you both.
Last call for questions, folks. I don't see anyone using the hand raise feature, so if you're on a phone and you wish to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, Teresa, it's Jody Harris.
Hey, Jody.
A question, if we did a full renovation, where would we, how how long would it take from start to finish? Where would we put those students and what would the cost of that be?
That's a few questions. And those we're not prepared to answer at this point. In terms of, well, I I should say not all of those, but the timeframe, I mean, it would have to be, either the the students would be elsewhere during that period, or it would have to be done phased with, you know, possibly some temporary modules brought in and done in pieces. We have done that before. It's challenging. It's you know, potentially disruptive timeframe. It's it's typically longer than what it would be to build new, unless you could have all the students out and have the have the building for, you know, twelve to sixteen months, for instance.
Yeah, a phased construction process, it is going to take more. That's it. You know, I would just ballpark six months to a year of the process.
I have a follow up question to that, actually. So the, any displaced student costs, are those things that would come up during the feasibility study, or is that something that's built into that estimate?
Both Abby and I are jumping our hands up right away to say that.
Sorry, I missed you.
No, I'm just, not to put Steve on the spot to have to project for us, but that is feasibility.
Okay.
Once we enter the pipe, once we are, the SOI is a statement of interest, so we express to MSBA that we're we're seeking their assistance. The building is in X condition. We use Steve's report to identify all of the areas of concern. Our application is assessed against standards and against the other pool of candidates that go in, and if they think we're a candidate, they pull us in. And once we're pulled in, we enter into feasibility, where we start to work with them on identifying a pathway forward. The pathway may lead to renovation. It may may lead to replacement, but it will come with financial estimates, which are inclusive of phases and all of the potential timelines with escalators. So that's when we'll get to the real cost benefit analysis of the of the two options before us. Again, I kind of go back to what we were talking about at the beginning. I think what we're reading and what we're hearing from Steve tonight, and I don't, you need to jump if I'm putting words in your mouth, Steve, which is the recommendation, the conclusion is that we're at that crossroad of determination as to when do we execute the SOI, as opposed to trying to work off of just that scope one list of things to do and stay afloat. And how many, if any, items in scope one we attempt to take on through the operating budget is going to be determined on when we feel it's appropriate to begin applying to MSBA. But I think Jody's questions are great, but it's going to take us a six month plus study to come up with the answers to them.
Well, well stated, Pam. You didn't put any words in my mouth. Already there, so thank you.
Jody, did you have anything else before I move on?
I did, actually. You knew, you knew that. I I think that it's important to remember that Essex, when we entered into this partnership, we worked very hard to market a regional school district. And in doing so, it was one of the main things on on people's minds were keeping their elementary school age children in each town, but also equitably having new buildings. And people were extremely vocal about that when we held our forums, and we did, we held seven separate forums with different groups. So I I think with the marginal price difference and the displacement of students in a renovation, I think that I would look hard and long at building a brand new building as opposed to doing a renovation, because I'm thinking we'd have a really hard time getting support for doing a renovation. At the end of the day, the concrete under that building is still sixty years old. The walls, the masonry is still sixty years old. You can dress it up, but it's still not a new building. I am concerned about space, and I do like the fact that we would have more square footage on a reno, but we've got also taken But we've got to also take into account that there may be a new regional sewer system coming our way, which is going to change the face of our towns who are on that sewer district. And there could be a building boom coming our way, and that should be in the forefront of everybody's mind here. So that's a, you know, that that's a tough one. You know, that's six of one, half dozen of another. But from an Essex perspective, a historical perspective, I think that residents are going to be looking for a brand new building. Just my, you know, look back at, you know, 22 years ago when when we got this thing off the ground. But I think it's important to remember that it was not a promise, but it was inferred that everybody, everyone would be on level playing, a level playing field and not the soggy one out back on at Essex. So thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and the report is great. And yes, we've kept our building in better shape than Memorial was kept in, but I do think that Essex Elementary deserves to be replaced.
Thank you, Jody. I see Kate has her hand up. Go ahead, Kate.
I think this is a question for Avi. Am I understanding this correctly, that if we were to do, when we saw that timeframe that had the two columns that said, you know, if we fast track this versus if we waited, if we were to fast track this and we submitted a statement of interest in 2023, am I correct in thinking that that statement of interest can only be for a replacement because MSBA has closed the acceptance of statement of interest for repair and renovation projects for the year 2023?
That was a different program. So no, there's an old program called Accelerated Repair, which is limited changes to a building that have very specific needs only that are not programmatic, and Steve can talk more about it. And so that's a separate program from the quote unquote core program that's been put on hold. With statement of interest, you just say we have an issue. If you get accepted into the core program, then they force you to say, show us what a reno looks like. Show us what a renovation within addition looks like. Show us what a new building looks like. Give us the numbers. Give us a high level design and help us explain if you have a preferred option, why? And the whole community participates in that program. So so no, that we would not be shut down on any of these options, as I understand.
So then really is the first task ahead defining our timeline? Not whether we want to repair or renovate, the first task is to define our timeline?
Absolutely.
Submitting the SOI, and that will really determine your timeline. And and something that probably should be thinking about is what happens if you don't get accepted in? And you may want to do some analysis as to what is your current reimbursement rate? What are the potential cost increases that could result because it gets delayed? So that analysis is something that, you know, you may want to be, I'm sure, you've probably, and Pam, I'm sure you thought of that as well.
Are you hinting at self funding, Steve? Is that what you're suggesting that if the timeline looks to be too long, there could be some benefit in a self fund option?
Essentially, yes. Potentially. I I've seen some communities head in that direction of late, particularly where you know, there's a, there's a potential that their invitation into the program could be several years out and faced with a situation where just may be untenable to wait that. So it, I mean, it is something that it's, it's not something you do lightly, because obviously getting state funding is is very important. But something that I I think the community may want to look at. Without it.
Okay, I think we're getting close to wrapping up because we've been through all of the groups. I do see Jake, you have your hand up again. Go ahead.
I just, I just want to follow up on this point. I do think it's worth us looking at an earlier submission than later, if for no other reason to get the feedback from MSBA to see how far out we might be or how we compare to the set of schools that are applying to help to help think through those issues.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, last call. Any last minute burning questions, particularly from anyone who hasn't asked one yet at this point? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I am going to say thank you very much to Tom and Steve for your presentation. Thank you for allowing us to truly to ask all of our questions while we have you here at the table with us. I know we as a committee and we as a community, a district community, have a lot to think about and to work together moving forward. But we definitely appreciate this this first look and the information that you've provided. So thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you again. We do appreciate it and enjoy it. We're here and we're going to be, you know, dealing more with Avi and Pam and, you know, ultimately refine this report that we made. You've got a challenge ahead of you and I think it's great that you're facing it head on and moving forward.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our continued business, because that was all we had for continued business. And we are, we are actually really doing well on schedule tonight, according to our own plans even, which is great. So moving into school committee comment. Anna, go ahead.
This might be more of a logistic comment. So this week and this time and also last school committee meeting, we both, both times we have publicly coming to make a comment. So what's our process about following up those comments? And that's number one. Number two, I just want to follow up on the comment that was made earlier today about the voting with the school council. Just want to share my personal experience as well, that I actually didn't get a link to vote. I actually voted on the link that my husband forwarded over to me. So and then, you know, during this week's review on the policy changes and whatnot, one of the policy was that it mentioned a school council, actually, the budget actually need to be consulted by the school council. So that I just want to raise that it does. I have a concern about it. Like if I don't know what the school council's process is when it comes to the budget process, but if we have questions about, you know, the voting, I would, you know, recommend us to. I don't know what it is. I just want to raise it.
Sure, absolutely. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna briefly comment to this, and then Pam, if you wish to add anything, please, please definitely do. So as far as public comment in in our meetings, generally speaking, we have two separate sections of policy that relate to public participation in our meetings and the guidelines for public comment. So generally speaking, the public comment is open to, people are supposed to keep it to roughly three minutes apiece, and it's technically supposed to be about something that is on our agenda for the evening. Of course, we can't know before something comes out of somebody's mouth, whether or not they're speaking about something. All we can do is provide the information. So that being the case, that is part of our policy. We listen, but also as part of the structure of our policy, we, it's not intended to be a back and forth. It's intended for people to be able to offer their perspective on things we will be discussing during the meeting. Separately from that, we have a complaint policy. And so this actually does connect to to your concern about the public comment that was made, which is that if there is a complaint, if there's a concern, first it gets addressed, well, if it's with a teacher, you know, of course, at the teacher. But in this case, it would be at the building level. The school council for every school is run by the principal and the PTO. If there's a functioning PTO in the school, those are the people who handle the elections. Those are the people who handle all of that. So the first step is to address this with them. Then the second step, if things are not resolved there, is to escalate to the superintendent. Okay, so you contact the superintendent and and work to resolve things there. If things aren't resolved in that way, then you're welcome to bring things up to school committee. But this is where we have a little policy conflict in that you're only supposed to bring things up to school committee through public comment that are on the agenda that night. But if it's, if you don't bring it up, how do you get it on the agenda? So by email is the best way. But if there hasn't been the opportunity or the opportunity hasn't been taken for someone to resolve it at the initial levels of administration, there's nothing for us to take up. So we would always refer back to the first step there. So for using this as an example, though I wouldn't typically like to do that, I do see the person who made the comment is still on the on the meeting here. The first step was to talk to the principal, talk to the PTO there, the the people actually in charge of the school council, which is not what we're in charge of. At a policy level, there's a separate issue. I know there was some concern about about not being willing to to share the name. And so there's an anonymity factor here, but there is a process in place for these things. So yes, we do follow up on public comment, but public comment is technically pretty limited, and it can send links out to those sections so that our committee is really familiar with that, so that as we're connecting with our community members, they understand it. But that is a separate thing than this. Pam, do you want to add to that? And then I see Kate has something.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to give you a quick synopsis of what I know and how it's been handled thus far. Emails were received at the school level and then eventually at the school committee and superintendent level from an address, which I won't share publicly, but had no indicator that it was attached to an individual person and looked very much to be spam. Those emails were not even opened. When it was brought to the attention, when Teresa responded to an email and we saw that there was a complaint underlying there, I did reach out to the individual, offering a meeting so that I could hear the complaint and concern. In preparation for that, I reached out to council. I've reached out to DES for any recommendations they may have should the complaint get attached to an individual who is involved in our school system. And to this, after two to three exchanges, there has been no willingness for this person to come forward to have a conversation and articulate clearly what the concerning complaint is. I'm prepared to take action if I have anyone from the Memorial community who would like to have a meeting and register a complaint.
And Kate, go ahead. You're on mute.
Hello. First, just really quickly, I know it's not what you meant, Teresa, but just to clarify, when you said that the person who made that comment was on the phone, was still on the line, I I know that you didn't mean that's the person who submitted the email, but as just clarifying.
Public, I meant who shared the public comment today. Thank you.
Of course. And then moving on, I think that this is a great spot to pause and just put in a plug for that complaint process. I know that as a committee member myself, I often hear from friends, from friends of friends, from families on the soccer sidelines about issues that are going on in the school. And a lot of that is chatter or it is not voiced through an avenue that's productive. And it's difficult to direct people back to that complaint process because people want to feel heard. But that is really the avenue for making yourself heard. Otherwise, it really is just hearsay. We as committee members cannot speak to somebody while we're walking our dogs and then place an agenda item on the school committee agenda based on that conversation. Things really need to go through that complaint process. That's why it exists. It's the same at any place of employment. If you have an issue that is a school level issue, it needs to go through the school first. If it is overseen by the PTO, it needs to go to the PTO first. You know, Pam and Avi are very, very busy people, and we can't be tasking them to deal with these types of things before they have been addressed at the school level. And so this is just my personal plug for please, it's not that we don't want to hear from you. That's absolutely not it. It's that we cannot hear from you until you have addressed the concern and given the people who are able to deal with it directly, the opportunity to deal with it directly. That's it.
Thank you for that general plug. I appreciate that. So Anna, I would just, I would just circle up and and say if you or someone else that you know, you know, does have this concern, to go through that process. You know, start with the PTO and start with John and and discuss it with them, and action can happen there. Pam's prepared to take action if you don't get resolution, but but really to engage in that.
In conversation with John, I'm willing to mediate or have a conversation between or manage the conversation between all parties, if that's helpful. We just need to have somebody direct to deal with, to to process a complaint. It doesn't even have to be formal in writing. And it can be confidential, but it is very helpful for somebody to come forward with the actual concern.
Thank you. Do any other committee members have comment before we adjourn? Well, my comment would just be thank you to everybody, to all of our committee committee members, but also our community members and our SBC members and our community leaders and everyone who stayed through this. We're all more aware and educated for it, and we really appreciate the participation. Pam, did you have something to say, please?
I would just ask, we're going to have to come back to this and process a little and deliberate a bit on what next steps should be. I know we'll share the report out. It'll get posted in draft form to the web. We'll share it with our our town partners and begin conversation there. Would the committee like us to, like me to come forward with a recommendation for action that you can deliberate on? Or would you rather just have an open conversation? I felt like Jake is starting to form an opinion. I probably, I've been very vocal about what mine has been in the past, so it will probably won't come as a surprise. But how do you want to handle the next step of arriving at a potential timeline or at least debate over what that timeline could be?
I will share my initial thought, which is that I always find it helpful to have the administration's recommendation. And then we can discuss and debate. We still can have open conversation, but it gives it somewhat, some gives us somewhere to begin. So I personally would appreciate that, but that's just my thought. Kate, are you raising your hand again, or did it just not go down?
It never goes down.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have any thoughts about that? Any reason not to invite them to offer their recommendation as we move forward in discussions?
Does that go, Teresa, your perspective? It's always easier to react to a proposal than start from scratch.
Okay, hearing nothing else, I guess that's the the sentiment.
So we'll build it. I'm happy to build it into the budget presentation on the sixth.
Great. Excellent. All right, unless there's any other school committee comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody at all? Thank you, Jake. Is there a second?
Second. Spencer.
All in favor, by roll call. Matt?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.